We're going to do the prayer?
First, we have to do this here.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I've been told to project, so I'm trying. This is the second of two public hearings for the 2020 Community Development Block Ramp Program. Purpose of this meeting is to describe what is being proposed to use the 2020 funds for, to solicit any comments on either how funds are being used, how past funds have been used, or how anyone thinks funds should be used. The Bayou's 2020 entitlement is $132,533. The proposed activities are grant administration and curb ramp installation. We're going to use $23,855 for administration, which is the maximum that the state allows, and that's an 18 percent of the total entitlement. The remaining available funds are $108,678. We propose to use that to do curb cuts on roadways and alley crossings on the east side of Fayette Street. Curbs in the borough and alley crossings were reviewed in July, and there are quite a few places on the east side. There are more places on the east side that don't have curb cuts than on the west side. We're going to be able to capture the engineering cost for this project with grant funds, which we have not been able to do in the past. So we think that approximately $13,041 will be used for engineering, and the remaining $95,637 will be used for construction. The average cost of a ramp, based on what we have done in the past, plus a slight percentage for increase, is about $6,125 per ramp. We think that we can complete about 15 to 16 ramps with that, and it should be noted that that is going to be dependent on what the Davis Bacon wage rate is. This is a federal program. We can't use state wage rate. We have to use Davis Bacon. Based on the review, intersections, the ones that are being, the locations that are being considered are Angel Alley and Poplar Street, East Sixth Avenue and Harry Street, East Fifth Avenue and Harry Street, East Omen Cherry, East Hector and Harry, East Hector and Jones, and Harry Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue across an alleyway. Final review is not completed yet, so, you know, those are about 17 different, they're about 17 different locations, so we'll get that down to 14 or 15. The impact of these, these, this project on low and moderate income population in the borough, older adults and people with disabilities are presumed to be low and moderate income, which is what allows us to use the CDVG funds for that, because Conshohocken does not have any areas where 51 percent of the population is low moderate income. That's why we can't use this money just anywhere. We have to use it in a situation where we can either presume that the beneficiaries are low and moderate income, or we can document their income eligibility. So, the borough is a walkable community, and because it's only one square mile, most road, most roadways lead to a public facility, or to the business district, or to transportation, which is what I'm basing why we can do this on. So, it also, it's good not just for the presumed benefit, but if families with young children who are just starting to walk, and it's easier to go down a ramp, people who aren't severely disabled, it's easier to go down a ramp than to, to go up a curb sometimes. The sites are selected pretty much towards the lower end of town, and some of them are around Marywood Park, so that gives us, and the community center, which gives us another reason for doing them, to make it easier to get to the facility. People go out to walk for exercise. This is, this is a community where everybody walks, and it, it just increases the walkability of the borough. Application is due on October the 28th, and we will be accepting, if someone doesn't want to comment tonight on this, they can provide written comments until the 2nd of October, and they should send them to me, CStetler, Conshohocken Borough, 400 Fayette Street, Suite 200, Conshohocken PA, or email to CStetler@conshohockenpa.gov. Can call the Borough Administration office if someone has questions or wants to know why that. So if anyone has any questions or comments, I would be happy to take them down and add them to the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
So there are no comments?
No comments.
We'll call the meeting, okay, we'll call the meeting to order, but you've already mentioned me, I hereby declare this meeting of Conshohocken Borough Council duly open to every, any business that may come before it. As a shareholder, that is second, prior to this meeting for legal matters, I'd like to welcome back Ms. Checo, and she has heard your role call.
Thank you, Colleen. Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Totino.
Present.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Note for the record that Councilmember Barton is absent. Vice President Sokolowski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you.
Vice President, Vice President Sokolowski, if you could do a prayer for council and vice legions?
Sure. Everyone, please rise.
O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people, and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
Fledgling legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Vice President Sokolowski to run the remainder of the meeting, since she is there, and President and I do a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, President Leonard.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public voting session via video conference and/or conference call. At this time, I would ask that all the participants mute your audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comment section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to B Rogers at ConshohockenPA.gov. A member of the Borough Administration during the public comment period will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. It is of the utmost importance that the public is given every available opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, if required, we will mute all audio lines due to any inappropriate comments or behaviors during the remote meeting. Borough Council and Administration thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. We hope that everyone in our community is staying safe and healthy. Okay, we will go to land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. The first item on the agenda is to consider granting conditional use approval for 541 East Hector Street. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Vice President Sokolowski. This is the scheduled date and time. If we could please go on the record, I see that Ed is there. Ed, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, it's me.
Okay, good. Sorry, there are two Eds, and then they're both here. This is the scheduled date and time for the application, the continued application of Craft Custom Homes LLC for the property located at 541 East Hector Street. The application is for a conditional use from the Borough Zoning Ordinance to permit a height in the residential overlay district of 40 feet, where the maximum height is 35 feet. That is Section 27-1903-B.11. At your work session meeting two weeks ago, you held a hearing on this matter. It was continued to this evening for a potential vote. It is now before you this evening for consideration. Council has options in terms of what it, what it can do this evening. You can vote on the application. It is prepared for your vote. You can continue the application and vote on it at a subsequent meeting. If you do so, I just ask that any additional information you need, that you please let us know, so we can address it between now and any subsequent meeting. So is there a motion? And the motion would be, again, either to grant the application, and I can walk through some conditions that staff has developed, should you choose to grant the application this evening. If you chose to continue the application this evening, I would suggest that it be continued to the first meeting in October, which is, should have looked it up beforehand, which is October 7th at 7:00 PM. Does any member of council have a proposed motion this evening?
Yes, I would like to propose that we postpone the decision and we, until we have further information, as was promised at the previous meeting.
And that information relates to the traffic pattern, is that correct?
Yes, to the traffic study on Hector Street.
Okay. There is a motion to, and again, it's not to vote one way or another on the application, it is to continue the application. Council, I believe, again, I would suggest that if you do so, I believe that your staff can review that request by the first meeting in October. Again, that's October 7th. So the motion would be, if there's a second, to continue the hearing to October 7th at 7 o'clock PM. The meeting to be held via hybrid means, again, and for it to be advertised on ConshohockenPA.gov. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, I will second it.
There's a motion and a second. Is all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Is there?
I'm sorry, Ed?
Can the applicant make a presentation or say anything before the vote?
The, the hearing, the record of the matter is closed, Ed, so no.
I was just going to point out that the conditional use has to do with light, not traffic.
Understood, Ed. We, we understand, believe me, this council is very familiar with what the conditional use is. Again, we are well within, not, not we, but they are well within their 60-day timeline to vote on the application. I'm suggesting to them that they can take a vote at the first meeting in October, which is beneficial to your client. They seem to be inclined to do so. So again, there's a motion and a second. Is there a vote? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And all, all opposed?
Motion carries.
My motion carries for the record. Again, the, this matter, the record is closed unless council votes otherwise. The purpose of the continuance is to allow the borough's traffic engineer to review the proposed traffic plan for the property. If there is a need for the applicant to rebut anything that the traffic engineer comes up with, we will certainly allow the applicant an opportunity to do that at the next hearing, which again, will take place on October 7th at 7 o'clock PM. The means of that hearing, again, for the record, will be through a hybrid meeting, and the specifics in terms of remote participation will be provided on ConshohockenPA.gov. With that, Ed will close the hearing. Thank you very much, and we'll need you back on October 7th, it appears.
Yes, sir.
And with that, the conditional use matter is closed. Vice President Sokolowski, please.
So the second item on the agenda under land use matters is consider approving Resolution 2020-23, approving preliminary final land development for 541 East Hector Street. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Vice President Sokolowski. Staff prepared for council's review, a Resolution 2020-23, approving preliminary and final land development. That resolution has been reviewed by council for the applicant and found to be acceptable. My advice is, and this is what you do with all of these matters, where there is an outstanding zoning issue, and there is now, because you have not voted on the conditional use, I would suggest that you continue, or rather, table this matter until you vote on the conditional use approval. That would allow for all zoning issues to be addressed before you vote on preliminary and final land development. And again, for purposes of the applicant's planning, I would expect that that could occur at the October 7th meeting, again, at council's discretion. So, the motion this evening would be to table item 5B, the Resolution 2020-23, approving preliminary final land development for 541 East Hector Street, if council is inclined.
Okay, I would make that motion to table.
And I will second it.
There's a motion and a second, and I actually don't need to do this one. Vice President Sokolowski, why don't you take a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And so council is aware, staff and I will be in immediate touch with your traffic engineer and the applicant to have any issues addressed. Thank you.
Mike, just for the record, the resolution numbers are going to change, just because of the order on the agenda.
Thank you.
So, it might not be Resolution 2020-23 on October 7th.
Sounds good. Ms. Checo, thank you. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda under land use matters is 408 West Sixth Avenue zoning hearing board application. I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Eric Johnson to introduce 408 West Sixth Avenue zoning hearing board application.
Good evening, everyone. We tonight will have a brief application and presentation for a case that will be going forward to zoning hearing for at their September meeting on the 29th. They have to do with the address at 408 West Sixth Avenue. The owner is Alex Frager. This property is a 2,800 square foot property located in the B.R. Woodzoning District. It currently has a single family, seven单身 dwellings, commonly referred to as twins. The applicant is seeking to divide the property into two units, to have a upper and lower residential unit, effectively duplex of a property. In order to, and that would require relief for areas from the use of the property, the additional unit would also require two additional parking spaces, in addition to the two spaces currently on the property, or in lieu, and to do that, you would need relief from the impervious coverage, or in lieu of impervious coverage, relief from providing parking. You should have an determination that has all the additional details laid out. But with that, I would turn it over to Alex to give his presentation on this proposal that will be going to their chair.
Thank you, Eric. So how do you want me to go through, just what the, what the idea, what our plan is, or just talk through what changes we're going to make to the property?
All the above, please.
All the above. Okay. Eric, can you scroll down to the front picture of the home? Start there. Let me give a lay of the land of the property. So, many of you, I assume, have been in Conshohocken for a while. You may be familiar with this property. This was Reds Cleaners for about 40 years. There was one owner before my wife and I. We bought this house November of 2019. We've been there since. We've been in Conshohocken five years. This is our first property. And when we bought it, we always had the idea of utilizing the space in some way, shape, or form. Now that we've been there, we just feel that this is a great way for us to, you know, monetize, you know, a very strong market. We all know, you know, Conshohocken has a great renters market. It's a great community. We love living here. We know a lot of people in my demographic love living here. The whole basement has been renovated, so there was a pipe burst in 2017, and the previous owners took the money and put in a finished bedroom downstairs, a finished bathroom, a middle living space that we're now utilizing as an office. And the front room, where you see the, the bottom door here, is what we're using as a second living room. So if you can envision, you'd have the front entrance on the street level, you'd have the living room, you, you would then turn the middle room into a kitchen, and then you'd have a back bedroom with a full bathroom, and there's actually storm doors out the back as well, so there's another way to get out. And then on the left side of the, the front entrance, as you see up, there's a front patio and a second front door directly above the street level entrance that opens up into our living room kitchen, and then there's three bedrooms upstairs. So, the house is laid out basically as two units as is. Currently, we're utilizing the space, but obviously, we're here to, you know, ask for approval to turn the property into a standing duplex. Eric, can you jump to the one you were just on, the, for the impervious coverage?
Yep.
There's another shot of the door. Yep. So, this is what we're proposing to do. So as Eric said, we, you know, there's really two options here. We understand that parking is, you know, important in Conshohocken. The property today has two parking spots in the back. Right now, what we're asking to do is extend, and I don't remember the exact demographics right now. So we have, we need to extend it about 13 feet deep to meet the 36 by 18 that, that they're requiring for us to have two parking spots in the back. So essentially, we want to take some trees out in the back of the house, so we can do two and two in the back to provide four parking spots on the property. The alternative would be to obviously grant a severance where we do not have to have parking for the unit downstairs. Currently, on the street, my neighbors directly to the left do not have parking. My neighbors attached to me do have parking in the back. My wife and I generally always park on the street. Where we live, on that part of West Sixth, there's a lot of off-street parking, and they're really, in our opinion, is not a major concern there, but we are willing to take the trees out, do the two and two, and give, you know, each unit its own parking. My wife and I plan on living here, as this goes on as well, so, you know, we are taking on responsibility of, you know, maintaining the property, making sure it's well kept, you know, obviously keeping up with, with the neighborhood. Since we've lived there, we've already gone through an application here. We redid all the concrete in the house, so all the concrete in the front of the house, all of the concrete stepping in the side and the patio in the back has been replaced in the last three months. That was a pretty big project that we, we had one year to do from when we bought the house. We had signed a document with the borough to state that we would take care of that. So all that's been taken care of, it's all new. You know, we take prime the property. We think we've kept it well, and, you know, it's important for us, so, I mean, that's, that's the plan. I mean, the, the problem that we're running into is, obviously, you can see, I put this together, the, the 60/40 rule. You want 40 percent of the property to be covered by grass. Eric, I don't, I can't really read that right here. I'm not sure what we go down to. So the total square footage, I think of impervious coverage would be 2,345, yeah, 2,345 out of the 2,800. So we would be over the 60/40 by a little bit if we did add the, oh, okay, here we go. So we're proposing 720 new feet of coverage for the parking. So right now, we have grass back there. And Eric, if you actually scroll down a couple of the pictures, you can kind of see, it's not really usable land right now behind the house. So here's the back parking as is. The fence came with the property, and we're basically taking these trees out to the shed. So we'll be two and two. Most of that space isn't really utilized as is, so as far as aesthetically, I don't think there'll be a major concern. Directly behind us are those new townhomes that had been built, and that alley leads down to Joe's garage. It's a dead end, and there's no parking outside of Joe's garage. So the park, the alley behind me is never used. Joe uses it here and there. He did my car once, but he's really slowing down. He's not, he's not actively seeking business, so, and like I said, there's two houses between myself and Joe, and neither one of them have parking in the back, so they don't, they don't utilize that space. So essentially, yeah, what we're going to do is push this back to the shed.
But you are going to put the parking in the back.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we're getting to, is, is, obviously, if we move forward, it's, it's up to you guys. I mean, let's be honest, easiest for us is for you to say, hey, you don't have to do parking. It's a one-bedroom apartment. If you want us to do the two and two, I've already got a quote, we'll take the trees out, we'll lay gravel, we'll put two and two in. It's really-
Do you think it would be prudent for council to provide some sort of input on whether you want to see the parking or not?
I'd like to see the parking.
I would too.
It's going to help you too, because-
For gas, for rental purposes.
So, we, we have a solution to do the two and two. It's just a matter of what-
Is it one in front of the other?
It would be one in front of the other. Yeah, so you'd have, yeah, two and two, back, side by side. Yeah.
My stipulation for approval, or my, just my, I would, you need to, we need to put the parking in.
Sure.
Up to us.
I agree.
I agree.
So that's basically what the thought is. Obviously, you know, I've been going back and forth with Eric. You know, we're willing to follow whatever regulations or requirements are necessary to split the unit. I mean, my father rented, so I know there's fire codes and things. We don't, we don't want to cut any corners here, so whatever's required or recommended or whatever, we're happy to work with whoever to make sure, you know.
So I think, I think for this evening, you know, it's not the zoning hearing board. Council hears these applications, and they provide any feedback that they may have, so that when you get to the zoning hearing board, you can build in, if you're so inclined, any of their recommendations.
Okay.
So I think if you're, I mean, they're, they're stating a clear support of you moving forward with the parking spaces, so when you're, when you are appearing in front of the zoning hearing board, if you can add that in, I think that's the purpose of this evening.
Sure. Okay. So, if there's any other questions or comments, feedback on-
That's going to help you with your rental, parking space for your tenant and yourself. I mean, you park back there now, right?
Honestly, we don't that often, because there's always parking right out front, so it's, it's, it's one of those, when you come home, if I don't see parking, I go around back. It's one of those, but, I mean, it's nice to have.
Yes.
It's nice to have. We've guessed over, or anybody, we, you know, so. Any other comments or thoughts on the idea? Nope?
No. Okay. So your next step will be moving forward to the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
Can I open my, please, Simon?
What was that?
The public comment, no.
No.
No, there's-
No, this was just a presentation at this point.
It's just a presentation. The public comment section is at the end of the meeting.
Hello?
The public comment section is at the end of our meeting. This was just a presentation.
I wasn't sure if it's, so, I keep hearing words saying, I wasn't sure if it was my turn or not, but, okay, I'll keep trying to listen.
Can you hear me now?
It's a little bit clearer.
Okay. There will be an actual designated section on the agenda that's called public comment, so just keep listening, and when you hear that, when we call for public comment, that will be when you can, you can discuss your, your item. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is presentations. We'll be celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. At this point, I'd like to introduce Jackie Rocco to give a brief description on the Hispanic Heritage Month. Jackie, can you hear us, if you can, on mute?
Yeah.
There she is. There she is.
She was a girl.
Oh, I got feedback. Do you have both your phone and your computer on, Jacqueline? We see you, we can't hear you. We see your presentation. You're still on mute.
Hello?
There you go.
Hello?
We can, we, we can hear you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you so much. Sorry for that little hiccup. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to come on tonight and talk about Hispanic Heritage Month and the task at hand for celebration. As we all know, over the year, that's sort of, that's put a damper on everything for us this year, so this picture that you see is the proclamation from last year, in support of, of course, the members of the Borough of Conshohocken, and the governor's office, so, I'm not sure if you know, so, this year, I just wanted to come on and really speak on the celebration that we actually have been honoring here. So just to go back a little bit, the Hispanic Heritage Association is based here in Conshohocken from the county. Our mission is to celebrate the various cultural, languages, arts, and education. Our vision is to just bring the community away from cultural culture by sharing, you know, resources, create events, and programs, and to lend support to our community. So Hispanic Heritage Month actually began as Hispanic Heritage Week, and Hispanic Heritage Week was actually designed and developed by Governor Lyndon Johnson, in 1968. The week had- So Hispanic Heritage Month actually began as Hispanic Heritage Week. And Hispanic Heritage Week was actually designed and developed by President Lyndon Johnson in nineteen sixty-eight. The week had six consecutive months of celebration, as we all know. So moving forward, the nineteen Hispanic Heritage Month, which was first proclaimed by President George, in seventy-four, nineteen eighty-nine, it used to be recognized by all presidents thereafter. So why are we starting now on September fifteenth? This day was chosen as the starting point for the commemoration because this is the anniversary of independent democratic countries that gained their independence. The countries are the Dominican, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, and Belize. They celebrate their independence on the day of September fifteenth, which is one of them today, Friday, September eighteenth, and September twenty-third, September fifteenth. Now, this is a take-away from the other Latin American countries because we celebrate them as well as they do gain their independence. So when we commemorate Hispanic Heritage and this day of Hispanic Day celebration, because we have hard-working Latinos, Hispanic, immigrant citizens that contribute to our country and our communities every single day. In the United States, we are fifty-two million people, of sixteen point seven percent of the national population. And of that, we have forty-seven million American citizens. So according to the census in Montgomery County, we are forty-three thousand nine hundred sixteen strong representing the population to be said by one percent. That number is sure to increase with the census underway. So of course, though, it is important to find the various cultures, for Latino cultures. We celebrate the Irish, the Norwegian, the Italian, Spanish, African, Mexican, and much more. These descriptions of the Latino Hispanic culture simply is why we're interested in the major represent in our heritage. According to my perception, and, you know, I discover my French and Italian side and my Spanish side, but I also have African, Portuguese, Norwegian, and Dominican. So for this reason, you know, we have to remember to celebrate Hispanic Heritage, Hispanic Heritage Day of Celebration, which we honor a special day given to us in this borough to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. So I encourage you all to celebrate them, you know, by ordering local Hispanic food from local restaurants, watching documentaries, explore with some music, take a class, a dancing class, or even learn how to date a friend, or watch a foreign film, whatever you decide to do, just have fun, you know. Thank you again, and happy Hispanic Heritage, as we always celebrate with the Hispanic Day of Celebration on Friday on our social media site. If you still haven't seen, check it out, your Facebook syndromies. Thank you so much, the Borough of Conshohocken, great work, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that presentation, if council's so inclined, we have a motion to approve proclamation twenty twenty oh five celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What was that?
It's a tongue-in-the-way.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have approve and adopt the August fifth and August nineteenth regular meeting minutes, and approve the August-ending treasurer's report and the accounts payable. May I have a motion to approve and adopt the August fifth and August nineteenth regular meeting minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the August-ending treasurer's report and accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars and forty-five cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business. First item is consider authorizing Q associates to collect residential and commercial recycling data for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Second item, under unfinished business, consider reappointing B. Burgveil and Company to conduct the Borough's annual financial audit for fiscal years ending twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. If council's so inclined to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider approving the Borough's twenty twenty-one minimum municipal obligations as required by Act two oh five. Is there a motion on the table to approve Borough's twenty twenty minimum municipal obligation?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Ms. Sakalowski, just for the record, the police MMO is for six hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. The fire MMO is for fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. And the non-uniform is for a hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five. And all three numbers will be in your proposed fiscal twenty twenty-one budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Checo. Next item on the agenda is to discuss Borough's special events for the remainder of twenty twenty. I'll turn this over to the Borough manager. Stephanie, would you like to discuss the details you have been working on with staff?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Sakalowski. At the previous work session, council requested for administration to attempt to come up with some innovative ideas for the remainder of our special events for twenty twenty, based off of COVID and certain restrictions, so that we could still celebrate some of these events, but still do it safely. So tonight, I have some proposals to put in front of you for consideration, and then we're looking for some feedback and some approvals, and then we'll move forward with planning. So the first event that we're presenting this evening is a pumpkin painting-to-go. So we usually do a pumpkin painting at the community center. Instead of doing it in-person at the community center, we would be handling registration through rec desks like we normally do. But we would be designating pickup times where families could come, get bags that include a pumpkin, paintbrushes, candy, and goodies. And they would come to the community center, and they would pick up their bag. And then we would be encouraging participants to submit photos of their painted pumpkins and send them into the recreation department. And those pictures would then get posted to social media and the website. So event costs total around five hundred and sixty dollars. So this is within the money that was already budgeted for the event, so it's not outside of what we would have normally budgeted in twenty twenty. And we think this is a fun alternative for families to still be able to participate in pumpkin painting and engage over social media as opposed to doing it in-person. Any feedback on that event?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay? And Lauren and her team would be spearheading this out of the community center and the recreation department. Good? Yeah? Okay. The next item for Halloween is a Halloween-themed movie in the park. That date would be tentatively Saturday, October twenty-fourth. The rain date would be Friday, October thirtieth. The time would be at dusk. We would have the movie at Suckliff Park, much like the movie that was planned for in the summer. This would be, this would again be in Halloween-themed. We would manage, we would still practice social distancing protocols, same thing that we did for the Summer Concert Series. We would not have the bathrooms open. We would encourage all people to sit six feet apart, and there would be no food or drink provided by the borough. And we would encourage and make it optional for kids to wear their costume, kids and/or families to wear costumes to the movie. So there are some admin needs that are per department that we're currently working through, but it would include advertising, on-site supervisor, preparation of the park, and then a police presence during the actual event. The estimated cost for that, outside of administrative needs, but for the screen, the movie licensing, and the movie itself would be about eleven hundred dollars. So this is in addition to what we normally do for Halloween, but we think with just some of the things that have been canceled up until now, that it adds something somewhat fun, somewhat different, to utilize our parks and get some of the community members out and together, doing it safely.
Were we looking at showing on the ground what six feet looks like for different groups sitting? Because sometimes people are still clustering. So I'm just curious what our thoughts were on that.
Though I know that when, one of the next events that we were going to discuss is for the holidays and doing a drive-in concept where we would be marking the field that the company that comes in and does it actually requires that, so we could look into doing something similar.
Just curious.
Yeah, we didn't specifically talk about it, but we can definitely add it to our list of items to discuss.
I'm just wondering, since we're offering wearing your costumes, you know, does that, does that help remind people to stay in your own little...
Your own little...
Six-foot... Yeah.
I have noted it, and when we reconvene as an administration to discuss final details, I'll, we'll discuss. Is it something you want us to move forward with doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Sticking with the Halloween theme, we usually do a Halloween parade and a Halloween costume. And instead of doing an in-person parade and in-person contest, we would be moving the Halloween costume contest fully online. So there would be a designated submission window where it would open and close, and participants would submit a picture of themselves and their families or their pets, whatever category they register for in their costume. It, the contest itself would open Monday, the Monday before Halloween, so October twenty-sixth, and it would close Halloween night on October thirty-first, with the thinking of if you don't have the time to dress everybody up ahead of time and take pictures that if you were dressing up for Halloween, then you could just do it that night and submit. Council would actually judge and select the winners in each category, so the submissions would be sent to you electronically per category. And then we would ask for your feedback, and we would select a winner. The categories would be toddler, children, groups and family, and then pets. And prizes would be mailed to the winners. Again, we would be advertising, we would be compiling the submissions and sending them to Borough Council, would be announcing winners online. We'd be purchasing prizes, and we'd mail prizes to the winners. We would be focusing on utilizing our local entities for the prizes. So for the toddler and the children group, it would be a gift card to Scoops. For the adults and the families, it would be a gift card to the Boathouse or the pub, the Great American Pub. And then for the pets, it would either be Scrub-a-Pup-Pup, if it is a dog, or if it is a different pet, because now people could get somewhat creative because they're at home, and then other pets might be able to be entered. I don't know how creative people are, but pet value in that instance. So total cost for that would be around, again, eleven hundred dollars, but that is a budgeted item. We just would be doing it in a different aspect.
Can myself and Dog Park do the pet judging?
Certainly.
Very heavy critiques.
I'm okay with that. Anybody else?
No, it's good.
Are we able to take those pictures and, and kind of make them movie-like and put them on the television against music where some of our older residents could potentially watch what...
So we have tasked Ms. Cosman with seeing how creative she can get with the TV channel and the website. The short answer is, we will try.
Okay.
Steph, so I have two film degrees, and I teach film. If you ever need... It's not, it's an easy edit, so just let me know.
Great. Then, then if we have some assistance, if she can figure it out, then the answer is yes.
I'll make a motion to have the mayor help. I'll second that.
Steph, you mentioned the figure of eleven hundred dollars.
Yes. Right, so it would be eleven hundred, estimated eleven hundred for the movie, and then an additional eleven hundred for the actual Halloween costume contest. Okay?
Going to have an active October.
Yes, and so, and in the middle of all this, Ms. Cosman's going to get married, so. Keep her busy.
Yes.
Okay, so that's fall theme, Halloween theme. Shifting gears slightly to Veterans Day. So the idea was to highlight Conshohocken Borough veterans on Veterans Day. And this would be residents having the ability to submit information. So we would request information out, so we'd be pushing information out to the public and requesting that they provide information into us. That would be posted to social media and specifically the TV channel. So again, all residents could participate in the information. But we'd be asking for the name of the veteran, either living or deceased, the branch of military they served, the numbers of years they served in the military, the number of years they were a resident of Conshohocken. If they wanted to provide a short summary of their military service, and then a picture of the veteran. And again, we would just be highlighting the fact that we have these great individuals in our community and kind of... Just giving, yeah, paying tribute to them on that day.
And I would say that could be run on our television for a month.
Yeah.
Easily, that's something that...
That just keeps us rolling.
Yes, yes.
Can I just, sorry, Tina?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, it's an awesome idea. Just a bird's-eye view. So we had Memorial Day, which we did not run through the Borough, but we had a local veterans group approach us and want to do a demonstration at our memorials. So if the same happens for Veterans Day, are we okay doing what we did for Memorial Day with police presence and fire police and barricades if needed and things like that?
Yeah, as long as we practice, yeah. And as long as we practice social distancing.
Okay, I'm going to keep going then. Then we move into holiday, you know, holiday period. So the first would be a...
Can we back up?
Yes.
Halloween.
Yes.
In Conshohocken. Trick-or-treat.
Yes.
That's, no.
It's not up to us. It's not a government...
They're talking about...
It's not up to us, so we will not be making a decision...
Each family has to make their own decision about that. That's not a Borough activity.
I'm just asking.
Right. Great, just put it out there.
Want to make sure when people ask me.
Right.
So if someone's asking about Halloween in general, the answer is that the Borough Council, elected officials, it's not our, it's not our decision to make.
It's up to the parents.
Right.
We are making decisions on the events that we historically have.
Right.
Just roll it out.
Yep.
Because remember, last year, people said, "We canceled Halloween because it was crazy." It's like we could cancel Halloween, so.
The next item would be our Christmas tree lighting. So we normally have a live Christmas tree lighting on Black Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. The idea this year would be that the, we would have a virtual Christmas tree lighting ceremony. It would be prerecorded, it would not be livestreamed. We do not feel comfortable livestreaming. We do not think we would be able to manage the number of people that would most likely still come out. So we would post a prerecording on the website, social media, and the TV channel. So you have multiple ways of capturing this prerecorded event. We would still post the prerecorded Christmas tree lighting on November twenty-seventh, so you would still have your Christmas tree lighting virtually on the same day that you normally do. It would be prerecorded at a date to be set by Borough Administration. We're thinking that we would like a member of council, if they're so inclined, to get involved in some ways they perform. That's to be determined, I'll discuss that with each of you as well. And then we'd have the lighting of the Christmas tree, Santa, and lighting of Marywood Park as well. In terms of costs... In terms of costs, everything is within the budget numbers that were budgeted in 2020, so there's no additions to that, it's actually much less expensive. Any feedback on that?
Is there a way to involve Ambux in some way, even if it's like a video message?
We, I will definitely reach out to the Ambux and see what they're comfortable doing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other feedback on that one? Okay, usually we have senior luncheons for both Thanksgiving and for Christmas, so instead of an actual in-person luncheon, we will be doing Holiday in a Bag for seniors. So the seniors will register by phone, that's how most of them register, or through rep desk, but they'll call the community center, they'll register, and then they'll be encouraged to drive by and pick up bags in the drive around, the circle in front of the community center. It will be on Wednesday, December 2nd, and the bags will include holiday chocolates and treats, crossword puzzles, word search books, certain care items, just something that they can leave with and think of the borough while they're at home.
There aren't any food items in there?
Any food items would be prepackaged, so something bought from a store that is packaged and then put into the bag, yeah. Those event costs would equate to around seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, again within the range of what was originally budgeted for the actual luncheons. The next item is a holiday house decorating contest. So participants would register through the borough to be part of the contest. The idea here is that each ward would have a best in Conchi, a first, second, and third prize winner. So the borough would be pumping out to the public that we are this year hosting a house decorating contest. It will be by ward, and each ward will receive a best in Conchi, a first, second, and third place winner. Council members will do the voting, but you will not vote in your own wards, so you will be paired with somebody else's ward. Yes.
As part of the voting, if you'd like, I have pictures from the last few years.
Yes.
I had started thinking of this being a good, so I have...
Okay, yeah, you can definitely send them to us. The houses would need to be decorated by Monday, December 14th. Judging would take place the week of Monday, December 14th, so anyone who registered, we'd be pumping back out to them that, you know, you need to be registered and have your lights on on the 14th and whatever day, we know someone's coming over to actually do the judging. Winners would be announced on Friday, December 18th, or Monday, December 21st, depending on how long that judging takes. I know everyone has different schedules, so people might need more time. And then the prizes would either be dropped off at the houses or mailed. Prizes would include a lawn sign, so you get a little recognition for your best-of award, and then again, we're just trying to push Conchi businesses, so gift cards to Conchi businesses and restaurants, and we would have four winners per ward, so we would try to incorporate as many restaurants as possible. And then pictures of the winning homes would be posted to the borough's website, media pages, and TV channel again. The only other thing we were, we're going to attempt to do is some sort of map potentially that shows who's registered, so if you're interested, you could go visit the houses that registered.
That would make sense.
Yeah, so we're...
And we're judging it.
Right, but just... You'll get, so when you register, it's a Google Doc, so it gets populated into an Excel sheet, and then you'll get the sections that, you know, buy the addresses. But say you're a resident and you just want to walk around and see which house is registered for the, to be part of the contest, the idea is that we'd be able to provide some sort of information to the public to say, you know, "Go to this address because they're part of the contest." Okay? Okay. Next item would be a drive-in Christmas movie. That would be tentatively scheduled for Saturday, December 19th, with a rain date of December 20th. The location would be the B field, it would be at desk. Again, the cars have to be spaced six feet apart. We would need public works to draw spaces for the cars and police to help move the cars on and off the field. There is limited capacity of how many cars, so this would literally be a first-come, first-served registration process. But this would be free to the public, so again, just getting people involved. The screen rental, the licensing, the movie, the paint, the overtime costs equate to around the twenty-seven-hundred-dollar mark. But again, with the events that we did not have, you're still not over encumbering a line item.
So what's the movie?
It will most likely be something along the Grinch. But I don't know definitively yet. There's surprisingly a lot of licensing issues when it comes to movies in a park, so you're limited in what you can choose from, and we're going for the PG.
Yes.
More family-oriented movie. Well, they have movies like older, like older-style movies.
Yeah.
That I just, you know, the kids might fall asleep, but... And then the last thing on, that we're going to attempt to do is do the virtual menorah lighting ceremony. So we have reached out to the rabbi. That would, again, would be pre-recorded and aired at a certain date and posted to social media and the TV channel. So again, this was our attempt at offering the community ways to still engage in the holidays and, you know, the time between now and the end of the year. If there's any feedback, if you'd like us to remove any of the items, if you'd like us to keep them, if there's something else you'd like us to consider, it's a tight timeline, so we're going to do our best to try to turn this around and get this out. One of the issues will be registration process, because it will be a Google Doc form, so you need a Gmail account. Most people have a Gmail account, some will not, so we're looking at one other alternative in terms of being able to register, so those are the kind of things that we're still working through. Any issues, concerns, questions?
Nice, nice work with your team.
I think that's a tremendous set of programs, it sounds great, just to cheer everybody up and keep people in the holiday spirits.
Do something positive.
Yes.
Yeah, and Kate Cosman did a good job of turning this information around with the help of really all of the staff who kind of met, collaborated, and here it is in front of you this evening, so.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we'll move forward with that direction.
Nice work, everyone. Okay, continuing on the agenda, we're at new business. So the first item under the new business is consider approving Resolution 2020-24 Designating a Section 504 Officer.
And that would be Chris Stettler.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2024 Designating Chris Stettler as the Section 504 Officer?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item under new business is consider approving 337 West Sixth Avenue Professional Services escrow release for demolition in the amount of one thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll slow down. Next item on the agenda is considering approving 351-353 West Seventh Avenue Preconstruction Professional Services Escrow Release in the amount of nine thousand and thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve 351-353 West Seventh Avenue Preconstruction Service Escrow. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approving 351-353 West Seventh Avenue Construction Professional Service Escrow Release in the amount of one thousand dollars, one thousand forty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider approving Saint Matthew's Fee Waiver Request for the Use of the A Field for the Outdoor Church Services. I would need a motion to approve Saint Matthew's Fee Waiver for A Field use for the dates of September 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, consider approving the EAC's Contactless Fall Community Cleanup Event. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Mayor Aronson to give us some additional details on the event.
Thank you. So really taking the lead from our conversation last meeting and tonight, working with the EAC and admin, we put together an event that still lets us have a cleanup, but hopefully in a very safe way. Essentially, we'll have registrations come in, we will deliver a cleaning kit to anyone that registers, it'll have a trash bag, a vest, gloves, EAC shirt, and we're actually working on masks too. And then we're just encouraging people to clean their street or their block and then put their trash with their regular household trash, and we're asking that they post online with the hashtag #GreenConchi signifier so that, you know, we can show how into it we are, so that's really it.
That's great. So I would need a motion based on the explanation to consider approving the EAC's Contactless Fall Community Cleanup Event.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We are now at the public comment section. Mrs. Rogers, do you have any submitted comments?
No, we did not receive any email submissions.
Great, thank you. At this point, I would open up public comment to anyone on the phone. You can unmute at this time, give us your name and your address and your comment.
Hi, my name is Janet Gregorio.
Hi Janet. Thank you Janet.
I'm totally opposed to Elm Street's request to make that forest wall twin into a dual plant. I mean, I've never went there, parking in Conshohocken is horrendous, and when he speaks about cutting down trees, I'm not quite sure whose trees or which trees he's talking about, because he cuts down trees, he's going away from his backyard. And he put a new patio in, with the patio in, I'm already getting water in my basement, so that concrete that he covers the grass with has kept the absorption of water, and so now I'm getting water in my basement, which I was willing to suck out and take care of it, because he's a nice kid, he's got married, he's a new baby, but you know what? I just can't, I'm not going to deal with it. I've been there for sixty-six years, and the last thing we need are more cars. I have five houses across the street from me, four of them are rentals, and at one point there's a two-bedroom duplex across the street from me, and then seven cars. When I went to the borough, they said, "Well, they're all relatives, can't lend you a house." But how do you prove that? How do you prove they're relatives? Once they're in, they're in. So, I mean, I wish I'd lost my, if he just rented to one family, that'd be fine, I couldn't, I don't want a duplex next to me with maybe, who knows, seven, eight, nine cars. And Joe Ransfield, he still is working, he still deals with his cars in front of the house, and so they're setting standards there, that's a marketing issue, a big, big issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any additional public comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, state your name and your address, please.
My name is De Gregorio. I live in 159 West Fourth Avenue. I think that this is a pretty drastic, they are considered, I don't know that there are any duplexes that have been, or two, for the resident home. And I'm eager, they should have done a threat study or something as required, but I don't think they've done that.
Thank you.
Because this, I mean, this is a pretty serious issue, it could involve the whole rest of this borough, Conshohocken, and all the other people who live there. If this goes through, then all of the single-family residents are going to be allowed to convert, they're going to use this as a measure to convert all their single-family residents to two families or more. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. De Gregorio.
Thank you.
Do I have any other public comment?
Yes, Scott, nineteen-two-hundred West Elm Street. I commend you for doing these hybrid models, but I just want to comment that it's really difficult and challenging to hear the audio at times, where it fades in and out, and it's really hard to hear the presenter, especially when I've faded these September second council meetings, it's really, really difficult to make out what anyone is saying. So I don't know if there's any way to try to improve the audio that we hear. And, you know, I think Kali, maybe now being on the phone, could probably test to help some kind of simple, if it isn't here, to have one of those people that can hear you clearly, but any other kind of conversation is very, very difficult to hear. The other thing is, a question I don't know if you can answer, because I know from the comment, but the commercial recycling data, how is that collected? What, I guess I'm, I might not understand what's done around that.
Mrs. Checo?
Yeah.
Scott, the commercial data is utilized to actually provide, to submit for a grant, so it is, it is encaps, it captures the commercial recycling data at each of the entities, so they go around and they do a survey of how and how much. That data is then sent into the DEP for grant purposes, and it also helps us just kind of evaluate how our commercial entities are recycling. So we actually get money in based off of how our entities are recycling within the borough. If that information helps. They're doing the data collection. We outsource to them to do the actual gathering of the data in order to apply for the grant.
Okay.
And then...
Thank you.
And the grant money that comes in gets recycled back into...
That's correct.
Paying for the cost of recycling.
The cost of the recycling that is, that is for the taxpayers, right?
Okay.
So it's not as if the money, the borough doesn't get money in and then it sits, the borough gets money in for that grant and then it is utilized.
So it supplements the cost of recycling as recycling continues to go up in cost?
Up and up, and up, correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thanks for asking that, Scott.
Scott, my question is just that, did you attend meetings when they were entirely virtual? Did you find that there is a difference? Was it from a tech, from a clear, whatever standpoint?
I think the question is, when the meeting was all virtual, was it clearer?
Yeah, I did attend when they were all virtual, I think it was clear. I know the challenge, everyone has, is talking over each other, but I think it was more clear that when it was all virtual, because I think when someone speaking, the presenter like Stephanie was talking, it's difficult to hear what she was saying, and then if any other council members comment, at times it's very difficult to hear what she said.
Well, we appreciate that feedback.
Well, we appreciate that feedback, and we'll discuss it and decide what our next steps are. So thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, this, this concludes our public comment section. At this time, I'd like to invite Ray Sokolaski up to the podium to recognize our fire services.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I want to acknowledge what the volunteer fire department did this last week. They had 12 members, as you see in those photographs. They had 12 members from the fire department get certified in swift water operations. So I think everybody here knows the importance of that based on the fact that we just had a flood recently. But these operations are, are not only for the river, but if we have a situation where somebody is, goes to an area that's flooded and they, in a car, they're able to get them out. Right now, they're joining the other three members that already have that certification. So there'll be 15 members of the fire department that'll have that certification. That is a, that is a, a great accomplishment for the fire department. There's no doubt that that kind of interest in this is, is very unprecedented right now for, for the, for our area. You'll see Tim Gunning, our fire chief, in that picture. The deputy chief also did it. It took three days to accomplish, two days on, at the fire academy in classroom. And then they spent the day, Saturday, at the pool in Plymouth Township. And then that is Flat Rock Dam. That's in Lower Marion Township, just below the dam. And they did that because the pressure from the dam gave them some adverse conditions to practice in. So Steve Young is, who is our fire chief, or not fire chief, but deputy fire marshal, is the instructor. And he brought his team in to do the instruction for this. So we're very lucky to have this capability. That gives us five, five members on each team. So we have three teams that can actually go and perform that now. So it's a great accomplishment for them, and I just wanted to acknowledge that they did it.
Congratulations to all our volunteers. And we are very proud to have such a dedicated group of individuals serving our community. At this point, I'd like to invite the elected officials to give any comment. Mayor Aronson, you want to go first?
Waiting to see what Brittany puts out first.
What's that?
Just waiting to see what Brittany puts out first.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so it is Suicide Awareness Month. So I just wanted to make sure our residents have these two, these two numbers. And remind everyone that this is a discussion that we've actually been a leader of in Concha Hocken. We still, unfortunately, because of the pandemic, have not hosted events recently. But these groups still exist. Prevent Suicide PA is a Pennsylvania resource, and the county also has fantastic resources. This information is all on my social media. And, of course, any resident can contact me, and I'm happy to get them any other resources that they need. Sure, so the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is 1-800-273-8255. And the crisis text line is 741-741. And then the second announcement is we made a $2,000 donation on behalf of our Conchi Strong campaign to Colonial Neighborhood Council. On top of the Sewer Authority donation, that's $3,000 that we've raised for our food pantry in just the last month. So, so thank you to everyone that bought a sign and participated in our virtual bingo event and was otherwise supportive with their donations. I know Sandy really appreciates it. That's up for me.
Thank you.
That's terrific.
Councilmember Stokely, any announcements?
Yeah, I just have one thing. It's great, I've been down the opportunity to go into the parks. South Cliff Park the last couple of weeks. And it's nice to see the young kids, the little kids, playing soccer and the basketball going and all the other things going on. And it's nice to see everybody coming out again. But we still have to be careful that there's still a virus around. But these little children, they don't know what's going on, most of them. And it's just, it's, it's good for them to get out and see them run across the field.
That's great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Flanagan?
I just wanted to thank our administration for all their hard work on planning, planning these activities for the residents. Looking into the holiday season, it's not going to be our typical holiday season in Concha Hocken, but we certainly have opportunities for everyone to participate. So please, if you have any questions, contact Lauren at the community center or call the Borough Hall or call your council person. We'd be very happy to help you. If you don't know how to register because it's a Google Doc, someone will talk you through it. Or just give us a call and we'll do it over the phone. So please make the most of all our hard work and enjoy these holidays coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Totino?
I do not have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Griffin?
Yes, I just, I just want to thank the mayor and the chief for the recycling and shredding event. I think we went off track this week, I mean, last week.
Yep.
Thank you. I think of all the neighbors and people around here, thank you too, because I think it would feel good.
Yep.
Awesome. President Leonard, do you have any announcements?
Now, just as everyone is staying safe and, uh, that's it.
Great, and I will just encourage everyone again. It is flu season, so be sure to work with your primary care providers or stop by CVS and get your flu shot so that you're protected from at least one of the viruses that could be coming through. Chief Metz, you're back in the corner.
I'll be going to the silent turn.
I have a couple of things. One, in response to concerns neighbors had in the area, South Cliff Park, we've been doing directed patrols down there for about a month, and it's going well. And I encourage all of you or any residents that may be listening right now, contact me directly or call the police. If you, if you think something needs immediate attention, then call the police. Excuse me. If you want to talk to me about something, you just reach out to me, and I'll certainly respond to you. The other thing is, we are not going to participate nationally out this year for obvious reason. So I'll put something out and, and before the end of the week to the public, but for all of your knowledge and anyone listening. And, and keeping with the community, community spirit of that, I would ask that people, if inclined, make a donation to the local food bank in, in that name. Like I said, it is a community event, and we're not, no one's hosting them this year. So I encourage people to do that, and I'll put some information out about that. The other thing is, in response to this COVID situation that we're all in, our report management service put together a way to report things directly. And there's a link on the Borough Police Services, on the Borough of Concha Hocken's website, under Police Services. There's a link to that. And the way it works is, if you want to give us information or report a minor crime, you can click on the link, fill in the blocks, and that goes right to our report management system. Somebody will see it. If it needs follow-up, we'll follow up. If we need to contact you, we'll contact you. If it's just information, we'll take the information. I don't think it's, it's not, I think it's underutilized. And like, again, it's for minor things or information. If you need the police, call us directly. That's it.
Thank you, Chief Metz. At this time, all elected officials have given their updates, so the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.